Is with the law firm of Ice Miller since 1989. Prior to that, she worked for City of Indianapolis Marion County, starting in 1984. And public access and public information laws are part of her expertise. She helps us out on a variety of legislative issues and is a great resource for us because she has been around, like I said, since 1984, working on these subject matters. And so she was very young then, she said, but she's a great resource for us as well. And this is really one of her specialty areas, along with public finance. So their bios are in your handouts that you picked up this morning, so I'm not going to read those. But I do want to, again, thank them for taking part of their salary to be with us and to cover this important subject matter, really about county council meetings and how the authority you have as a county council to run those meetings. So it turns over to Karen.
So, very briefly, okay, let's see here. If I hit this slide, this button, this is the standard legal disclaimer that I have to put on everything, that this is for your information purpose only, and if you really need to know what the law is, go find the county attorney or the county council's attorney, or call David or Ryan. And if it's beyond their capacity, which is unlikely, but if they can't figure it out, they'll call me, and I'll try and figure it out, and then I'll tell them what I think the answer is, and then they'll help you. Okay, I get to turn it over to Luke right away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me here. It's a pleasure to speak to you all this afternoon. I want to give you one critical piece of information, and if you take a single note today, jot this down. It's my agency's website. It's www.in.gov, in.gov backslash PAC is in Public Access Counselor. So in.gov slash PAC. The reason I bring that to your attention is because, you know, if you ever face a situation where you're unsure about what to do when it comes to either the Open Door Law or the Access to Public Records Act, give me a call. More likely than not, you'll get me directly. We're a very small office, so all my contact information is on that website. Additionally, we also put some frequently asked questions about commonly encountered scenarios by public agencies and governing bodies. All that information is on that website, including some links to not only the published opinions that I've written in my tenure as a Public Access Counselor in the past three years, but also all my predecessors' opinions as well. So there are about, I want to say around 3,600 published opinions on that website. It's searchable to a degree, but if you can't find what you're looking for in those materials, please, please, please don't hesitate to give me a call, shoot me an email. I have a wonderful, wonderful staff that works for me that's more than happy to help you out. So there's good news and there's bad news this morning. Between Karen and I, I'm sure she can tell you that we could go on for a considerable amount of time talking about access issues and some of the things that you may face in the course of your operations, but we're limited to 45 minutes. That's the good news for you. So we, you know, but I can pack, we can try to pack as much information as we can, but also, again, I encourage you to reach out if there's anything we don't cover. So the open door law. What is the open door law? Pretty simple. Anytime a majority gathering of a governing body meets to discuss public business, the open door law is triggered. Okay? So that's any governing body statewide, city council, county council, board of zoning appeals, executive committees of state agencies. Anytime some kind of authority has transferred or delegated an official function to a body of people, that governing body is potentially subject to the open door law when a gathering of those members meet to discuss public business. Well, what is that not? That's not meeting, or that's not being in the same room at the same time at the local high school basketball game. That's not attending the same church service at the same time. A lot of local government officials contact me and say, oh, you know, I have to completely change my lifestyle because of the open door law. Not that draconian. It's not that strict. Public business is what triggers the open door law, when you're discussing those things that are germane to your official duties as representatives of your local communities. So it's not those social gatherings. It's not even really chance gatherings. If, you know, two out of three board of commissioners run into each other at the county courthouse, and they engage in a discussion about family or children or things like that, that's not subject to the open door law. There's no violation. I got a complaint a couple months back about, it was right after Christmas, and a group of councilmen had, you know, went out and removed the Christmas decorations from the courthouse. And someone complained and said, hey, wait a minute, they were all there at the same time. That's not public business. That's not official public business. It's when you're discussing substantive matters of public policy or initiatives. That's what public business is. And what happens when you do meet is there's a couple requirements. It's not a prohibition on meeting, of course. It just means that you have to give notice of those gatherings. And that notice is pretty simple. It's 48 hours in advance, and it has to list date, time, and location of that meeting, of that gathering. It can be anywhere you choose that's accessible to the public. Doesn't have to be in a designated town hall. It can be at a school, elementary school or high school conference room. It can be at a, you know, it could be at a church. Anywhere where the public can come view that discussion is perfectly appropriate. So the purpose of the open door law is so that the public gets to see what you're doing when you're making decisions as their representatives. I worked in the private sector for a while, and my work product was between myself and my supervisor and maybe some clients. But when we avail ourselves of public employment, or when we're appointed or elected to public office, that means that our work product can be scrutinized by the entirety of our constituency, which I know coming from the private sector can tend to raise some half sometimes, you know? That's not a comfortable position always to be in, that your work product, that what you do as representative officials gets to be seen by virtually anyone who wants. But we are serving the public. We are, you know, charged to be good stewards of not only their taxpayer, you know, tax monies that they remit, but also their trust. And so to be open with the discussions that we have that involve, you know, those kinds of considerations means that we're accountable to them. And if we operate in good faith, and we have these meetings that are open, and if we discuss things transparently, then that fosters that trust and that accountability. And that's the whole purpose of both the Access to Public Records Act and the open door law. We'll talk about public records here in a minute, but so that kind of covers the basics, the very bare bone basics of the open door law. And Karen, I don't know if you want me to go into executive sessions or not.
Yeah.
Be glad to. Okay, sure. Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Carpooling to an AIC meeting.
Okay, so carpooling to an AIC meeting, like this morning. Exactly. So there are exceptions carved out in the open door law for those kinds of things. So traveling to and from a meeting like this, even if you're in the same car, do not count as the open door law. You wouldn't have to give notice that you're all meeting here today. Yeah, yeah. So there are some practical exceptions, some common sense exceptions, that the General Assembly has carved out. Another question?
Email conversation between a majority of that governing body.
Well, when I look at a scenario and scrutinize whether the open door law should be applied or not, when I'm dealing with conversations that aren't in the same place at the same time, I look at the simultaneous nature of that discussions. So email isn't necessarily real time. Sometimes, you know, I'll get a complaint that, you know, a council or a board has brought their laptops or their smartphones up to the council table, and they're texting back and forth or emailing back and forth at the same time as they're sitting there having an open meeting. Now, that's simultaneous conversation, and I would argue that that would trigger the open door law. But if someone sends a brainstorming or idea or solution type email out to the rest of the council, expecting that at some point they're going to read that and weigh in on that, that's perfectly acceptable because it's not that real time conversation. That doesn't substitute for a face-to-face conversation. But a telephone call is real time. Video conferencing would be real time, and that instant message scenario I described would be real time. But that's a very good question. But I don't want to discourage any of you from using email. It's a valuable communication tool. Just be mindful that under the Access to Public Records Act, someone could potentially come and ask for those emails. So just as a matter of course, you know, make sure that, you know, you don't put anything in an email that you don't want the rest of your community to see. Yeah.
Regarding email, I can't remember if you have a lot of that. So how would that work with access to that? To make decisions? I want all of your emails, even if they're in private email.
Sure, sure. That's a really good question as well. That kind of steps into the Access to Public Records Act, but since we're on email, we'll cover that real briefly. So my take on the matter is that if you're --
Question, please.
I'm sorry, say again.
What's the question?
Oh, I'm sorry. So the question's about what if you use a private email account to conduct public business? If you're on Yahoo, if you're on Gmail, whatever. There's no prohibition on doing that. But my take on it is, if you're conducting any kind of communication medium to conduct public business, then that could potentially be subject to disclosure. So even if you're using your Gmail or Yahoo account to send out public messages, that doesn't mean that the public can reach into those accounts and see everything in those accounts. But it does mean that you should keep those and retain those messages as if they were potentially disclosable or were public records. So, you know, the public doesn't get to see your Yahoo account email that you send to your wife saying, I will be late for supper. It doesn't mean that any other kind of communication in that, other than what's germane to your official capacity, what is public business. And those messages should be retained, even if they're used on, or even if they're sent through a Yahoo or Gmail account. You know, keep those in a folder somewhere. I've seen some who don't have access to a public server. Some small communities just don't have a public server to conduct their business, so they set up a new account, you know, trusteejones@yahoo.com. And that's their public account, and then their personal account, of course, is nondisclosable, and that's their personal stuff. But just use common sense when it comes to that kind of thing. Yeah.
What's the worst thing that could happen to you?
What's the worst thing that could happen to you? It depends on your intention to violate the law. So if it's just a matter of legal misinterpretation, or say that your county attorney has a differing opinion than mine, you know, and that goes to court eventually, well, the judge will look and say, was this a knowing violation? Was this an intentional or malicious violation of the law? And if so, that judge can fine you as a public official, and that would come out of your pockets, not necessarily out of the county coffers, but, you know, they can reach in and fine you up to, it's a hundred dollar fine for the first offense, and then $500 after that. I've only seen one case where that's actually happened, but it has. So that's kind of the worst case scenario. Practically what happens is that someone usually complains to me, and I issue an opinion that says you violated the Public Records Act, and that doesn't look good for you. It doesn't look good for your reelection or reappointment efforts, and so, you know, that's kind of the practical matter of it. But when I issue my opinions, I want to be clear. A lot of folks come to me and say, ah, you're just gonna, you know, bark at us through your opinions, or, you know, you're gonna, you know, about 40% of the time, I do find a violation. But when I do so, I use my opinions as a means of education and instruction, not as playing gotcha. So when I publish these opinions against, say, you know, the City of Indianapolis, for example, I'm not out to get the City of Indianapolis, and I write my opinions so that anyone reading those knows that, hey, you know, maybe you missed a deadline. Maybe you misinterpreted the law in a certain situation. It's just to course correct and to go from there. It's not to play gotcha. It's not to be a public access cop. I take the counselor part of my role very seriously, and I apply that accordingly. Is there another question in the back? No? Yeah.
What about the number of people, like county council members? Does this always apply if it's certainly four of seven, or is it three, or what?
It only applies when there's a majority. So four of seven would be a majority. If there's nine, five of nine, that kind of thing. Yeah, there's also what's called a serial meeting prohibition, and that's when three or more members gather to discuss the same subject matter within a week's time. It's kind of prevents, you know, the council from splitting up. And in essence, what they're doing is they're talking as a collective about public business, but they're just splitting up into delegations to intentionally avoid the open door law. So just be mindful of that serial meetings prohibition as well. But that's rare that that actually applies, but it does happen. Yeah, I'll cover executive sessions real quickly. Executive sessions are the exception to the open door law. So there are some meetings that can take place behind closed doors. Those are called executive sessions. Same notice requirements apply, 48 hours, date, time, location. It also, the notice also includes one additional element. So the General Assembly has carved out this exception for executive sessions, but it's subject matter sensitive. So there are only 13 or 14 different reasons to have an executive session, and they're all codified in the open door law. So you can see, oh, does this apply to our scenario, to our discussion? Then we can have an executive session. And when you're deciding whether an executive session is justified, and say that you do come to that conclusion, the reason for having your executive session should be in your notice. By statute, you should cite the statute. Were justified having this executive session based on Indiana Code 514-1.5, 6.1, B, whatever? And there are a couple different exceptions. The most popular ones talk about job performance of personnel. You can discuss that behind closed doors. You can talk about confidential records behind closed doors, if you receive those as a council. You can discuss strategy about pending litigation with your attorney behind closed doors. So things like that, that are a little more heightened of sensitivity, they can be discussed. And minutes don't have to be taken of those in the form of a narrative or a summary like you would with a regular open meeting, because that defeats the purpose of having an executive session to begin with. So all those minutes or memoranda would have to say are, you know, we met, date, time, location. This was who was present, and this was the subject matter discussed. Details don't have to be involved, just a general subject matter. Again, that would defeat the purpose of having a closed-door meeting if all those details were made public. So you can just know that you can have those sessions behind closed doors, but only about the subject matter as authorized by the General Assembly. Yes, question?
County council imposed an executive session. Are we required to have the auditor in there with us?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a really good question. By and large, I would say, yes, the auditor should be included. The auditor is the one that takes the minutes, is kind of the clerk of the council. On the city level, the clerk treasurer takes those minutes. I recently issued an opinion that said the clerk treasurer should be included in those executive sessions. Now, what happens if the executive session is discussed, the auditor, or say there's a, you know, litigation that the council is one party, and the auditor, as a separately elected official, is either an opponent to that litigation, or else maybe is sympathetic to the opponent's cause? This scenario is playing out right now in northern Indiana. So what I would suggest is that, you know, if you need to discuss litigation strategy with the council's attorney, then maybe that would be a scenario where the auditor could be excluded. But those should be exceptions to the rules. So there are some scenarios where I could justifiably see excluding the auditor, but those should be outliers. Yes?
Jump back just a minute. What is the --
I'm gonna get to that. You just asked me the question.
What is the exception of the 48-hour rule on emergency meetings?
Okay, so emergency meetings, emergency isn't a term of art. It should be the sky is falling type of scenario, that unless you meet, the county government cannot continue, unless you meet, you know, someone will be at risk, and public safety will be compromised somehow unless you meet to discuss a certain thing. It's not, oh, we missed a deadline on a grant, and we have to meet to get the submission in, and so therefore that's an emergency in our eyes. It should be a true emergency, danger to life and limb type scenario. And so that would be the exception to the 48-hours rule notice. Yes? I'll take this and then hand it over to you, Karen.
Thank you very much. You mentioned auditor in the meeting. Is that the elected official or a member of their staff?
The auditor statute has another one of those, shall. That the auditor shall attend all meetings, and even an executive session is still a meeting. But in this case, and in the commissioner's statute, and I can't remember if it's in the council statute also, there's specific language that says if the auditor isn't present, can't be present, or for whatever reason, the commissioners can designate a deputy, somebody, even a commissioner, to be responsible for being the record keeper for that particular meeting. So if it's the situation that Luke has mentioned, where there's adverse litigation or potentially adverse litigation, and maybe you don't know whether the entire auditor staff, all, one and a half of them, are involved, and you might not want anybody from there, I would, I would, you know, say to, you know, Councilor Kibitz, you're gonna take the memoranda of this meeting to make sure that we don't do anything we're not supposed to do, because in addition to the memoranda saying, this is all we talked about, you have to certify that we didn't talk about anything else.
That's really good information, because we have had situations where the auditor didn't feel that they had to be in.
Well, their statute says they're supposed to be, but I would say if the auditor doesn't want to be there at any meeting, ask them to send a deputy or an assistant or somebody, because they are your recording officer.
Right.
Question back here.
Yes, I have a question regarding the executive session. Like you say, the subject matter, do you have to put the exact subject matter, or can you say, well, meeting presented, or the DM code, da-da-da-da-da?
That's fine. I think you can put, cite the statute. It says job performance of personnel. You don't have to say what personnel. You don't have to go into detail specifically. Just state that, you know, this is why we're meeting, cite the statute. That covers the obligation under notice.
Now, me, I will sometimes tell my clients, just use the exact statutory citation, because that, particularly if you're doing an economic, you're gonna have discussions regarding an economic development, you're meeting to, like, in your, an approved executive session for an economic development purpose. You may not want people to know, because then people start sniffing around, hmm, anybody sold any land rate lately? Anybody seen any site developers? Has the Chamber of Commerce made any trips to China lately? You seen anybody out surveying the farm acreage over there? Because if you put too much information in that notice on some things, you may be tipping off people of something that you're not quite ready to unveil to the public. But I know, because I've seen his opinions, that say, I prefer that you include 514-1.5, 6.1, B7 to discuss X. But again, it doesn't have to say, to discuss the fact that Joe Schmo was sleeping on the job last week. No. So, we don't have any case law yet, so we haven't been told we can't just use the statutory site. But it's kind of like, if it's that kind of thing, it's kind of good for the public to know that you're not just, like, meeting in secret to plot your secret, you know, takeover of the state government. Okay, notice requirements under the county council statute. You all know you have, oh, there's a question.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the auditor question. As to who should be attending executive session meetings, and kind of the question would be, as far as an advisor to the board, would they be allowed or required to be exempted from that meeting? Like, say, the county attorney or another advisor to the board?
You are allowed, under the statute, when you conduct an executive session. The governing body can invite such people as it believes to be necessary to its meeting. So in the case of litigation, you probably want your county attorney there, but they're not required to be there.
I've had a situation where an advisor insisted on being there as a board member.
Of the board that's actually meeting an executive session? Well, I don't know how you exclude a member of the governing body from a meeting of the governing body. I don't think you can do that.
I mean, you can, the board would have, the board members individually would have the right to be in an executive session exclusively. Now, if you wanted to caucus to discuss a certain issue that might affect another board member, then that would be appropriate, and that would be the way to do it. So a caucus is an exception to the rule, but that's a political animal. So, you know, only Democrats could meet in a caucus, only Republicans could meet in a caucus, not the entire board or a mix of the two.
But it doesn't just have to be partisan politics. It could be, let's just say it's the council, some of the council is for a proposed economic development project, and some of them are absolutely opposed to it. No way, Jose, under no circumstances. Those could each be separate caucuses, because they clearly have different views. But I don't know of any way you can exclude somebody who's been, especially an elected official, who's been elected to the county council from a meeting of the county council. But maybe you want to call a caucus.
I just want to follow up on that. So is the seven county council people want to meet, but the council attorney says, I have to be there? Do they have to allow the county attorney to be? It's just the seven county council people?
No, no, because here's the other thing, is that the county attorney is the county attorney. The county council could say, no, wait a minute. We have the authority under our own statute to hire our own attorney. So you were hired by the commissioners in this case, and maybe you do represent the entire county, but this is our meeting, and no, we don't want you here. And I've probably got lots of friendly county attorneys who are now ready to shoot me. Okay, Dave, it's handing.
A question arises to me. I'm gonna have a meeting next week that is just a committee meeting, but it's a public meeting, not a public hearing. But anticipating a large attendance, we really feel like the room we're having at the end is where we need to meet. What if we have such a large attendance, but not everybody can get in the room?
Yeah, I've answered this a couple times. If you are anticipating a crowd that can't fit in that room to observe that discussion, then you have a couple options. Number one, move the meeting to a larger venue. Number one, move the meeting to a larger venue. You know, that's probably the quickest and easiest way to solve it. The second option would be to have some kind of public address system out in a hallway or an auxiliary room or something like that where they can hear the discussion or, yeah, or video conference it, put it on public access television if you have that capability, something along those lines. That would satisfy because the right of the public is to observe and record that in real time, observe or record in real time. So, if they have the option to do so through some kind of pretty easy means, then that can happen. But, you know, I think it's a good faith type thing to have those options. I don't know that the law says that you cannot, under any circumstances, have it in the town hall if you know that the audience is going to exceed capacity. But again, I think, again, being a good steward of those positions would say, "Hey, you know, the public has the right to see what we're doing, to listen to what we're doing, so let's find a way. Let's make some kind of reasonable accommodation to allow the public to view our proceedings."
I need to ask him a question first, and then we'll call you, Jack. So, let's assume that they've already done their 48-hours notice, or their appropriate notice. There's not gonna be time to repost. Would it be appropriate... But they can find another location. Would it be appropriate for them to put a notice on, say, the door of where they were going to meet to say, "We've shifted this meeting to the high school gym. Starting time is still the same, dah 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 dah." Even though technically that notice won't meet 48 hours? Is that okay?
I think that's fine. Again, that... The law doesn't specifically say it, but again, there's a common sense standard. And if you are demonstrating good faith by moving it to a bigger venue, then I don't think the open door law... Open door law is so strict to say, "No, you can't. You have to wait a whole new 48-hour period to post that."
Well, Dr. I just add one more thing. We've had one of these meetings already, and we accommodated everybody with a few empty chairs. And we don't really have, I think, a good reason to shift, but we never know what is gonna happen. It's gonna be a last-minute thing.
That's fine. If you're going off of, you know, a historical circumstance, you know, last week, we were anticipating the same crowd this week as we did last week. We were fine last week. It wasn't standing room only type of thing. I think you're okay and wouldn't have to make those accommodations beforehand.
I have a question. I'm glad Larry DeVore is here. I think that's him back there.
He is.
But at any rate, this week I participated in a study committee, local government officials, about local government. And the letter from Purdue University with Larry's name on it said that we could not have a forum. And my question is, why not? Maybe Larry doesn't know. Do you know the study I'm talking about? It's a...
Was this in Fayette County?
Pardon?
Is this Fayette County?
Spencer County.
Spencer County. Oh, okay. I was about to... That was a...
Tuesday, I believe.
Yeah, that's right. So, it's a program that my colleague, Anna Ogle, did down in Spencer County.
Exactly.
And I'm not sure what the letter said, but it's true. I think it was probably a way of saying, "You can come to this meeting and don't have to worry about the legal requirements of a meeting of the county council." And I hope that's right.
No, it said that we could not have a forum.
I would liken that scenario, it sounds to be a similar circumstance as here, this program today. And like I said, there's an exception to the open door law that says a majority of the council can gather to... At programs devoted to the betterment of government, which this would be, and it sounded like Tuesday would have been as well. So, I don't think there's a prohibition legally on any of that, and I don't think notice would need to be posted that a majority is gathering there, just like it wouldn't, you know, today either.
What about a notice? You guys aren't getting a jester.
That's okay. That's okay.
What about a situation in which a majority, a quorum of county council members, for example, would attend a properly noticed meeting with county commissioners? Does that have to be noticed separately as a possible meeting of the county council?
I'm monopolizing all of Karen's time. I apologize. But that's a good... That's a really good question, and I'm facing that, you know, here recently. If it's... If those councilmen attend, say, a board of commissioners meeting, and they don't know that their fellow councilmen are going to show up, and they're independently made the decision to be in attendance, then that's just a chance gathering. They may be there at the same time. They may be receiving information about public business, but it's a chance gathering. However, if they know that four of the seven are going to show up and be in attendance, throw up a notice, and that satisfies your obligation. There's no prohibition of them being in the audience. And then if it is a chance gathering, you know, I would recommend those council members not sit in the same row and not, you know, talk to each other, you know? Yeah, exactly, exactly. Just use common sense. I don't think anyone has to leave the room. I think they can all stay, just be, you know, mindful of all that.
So, my question goes back to the caucus issue you brought up. You pointed out that it doesn't necessarily have to be partisan. It's a political issue.
Is that... Sorry?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
So, and this is a little bit odd, actually. Thankfully, we don't have this.
But it's Monro County, so of course it's odd.
We don't have this circumstance.
Okay.
But theoretically, you could have a, to address the question you came up earlier, the anti-member X caucus that would meet in a caucus to talk about the one member of the body.
Theoretically?
As long as they're not actually conducting business in this way, right? That's a weird exception.
Theoretically, I suppose, but I suppose that one person... The chances that y'all are not gonna talk public business in that situation is probably like slim and none. And then he may have, yeah, he may have an open door violation that he wants to file because at the very next meeting, you all vote like six to one against something he wants to do, and he's like, "With no discussion." You just, "I move, second, count all the rolls." It's like, "I think something's fishy." Yeah. Yeah, unless it's issue-based. I don't think I'd get into personalities. David?
What are the requirements on a personnel committee meeting? We have three councilmen on the personnel committee that meets prior to the budget period to listen to office holders, department heads, bring reclassification issues up to try to promote their employees.
Yeah. Committees or delegations of members of any governing body would be subject to the open door law same way as the original larger parent committee or parent commission would be. So, even though that three is not a majority, the council has established a whole new governing body exclusively for the purpose of personnel. Now, if it's an ad hoc committee and three, you know, three members just want to get together to discuss this, and it's not kind of a sitting or standing committee, I guess, then that wouldn't be an issue. But if it's a designated committee of the council, then that is creating a whole new governing body. So, anytime two of the three of them meet to discuss personnel, then that would trigger the open door law.
I've had occasions to talk to media people that seem to think these logs were written such that they're supposed to be notified so they can report back to the public. I don't necessarily believe that, and what I'm hearing today, it sounds like the notice is to the public, and the media is just public also?
They can be, but there are provisions in the open door law that say that, in addition to the posted notice that you put at the meeting place or at your main office, if you've had media file a request to receive your notices, then you have to provide them notice. Now, the statute says they have to file before January 1 of the year for which you're doing it, and there are three ways in which you are then... You can choose one of them, but there are three ways in which you essentially have to provide them essentially the same 48-hours notice. And yeah, so you could go strictly by the letter of the law there, but I... If you've got media in your community who regularly report or misreport on your business... No, I know, they never misreport. I know. But anyway, who in your view, who in your perception, or perhaps not quite understanding what you're doing, I would, as a matter of courtesy, just, you know, make them part of your automatic distribution because nobody wants to fight with people who buy ink by the barrel or who have unlimited access to the internet. It can get ugly real quickly, and if there's anybody from Tipton County, they can probably attest to that.
One comment following that up. Bloggers are not media. So, if you have a community blogger that demands that kind of individualized notice, there's no obligation to provide it to them, so.
Okay. Because I know we're kind of short on time, and I know David mentioned, and I just, I hadn't paid attention when we talked about this, that y'all were really concerned about who gets to come and yell at you during a meeting, and how long they get to talk and all of that. And Luke actually has sort of a model or some sample, whatever. So, I put the thing that he sent me on the PowerPoint slide, and we can talk about it and what you might want to do, what you can do, what you can't do. And then one of the questions was, "Do we have to let him record?" Yes. And there's case law on that. And I was actually working for Marion County when that happened, and it was during the public portion of a merit board hearing, and the merit board ejected Channel 13, and Channel 13 took us to court, and it was very ugly. And so, there's a Supreme Court case that says, "Yes, they get to record."
Yeah, there's no right on the part of the public to speak at a regular public meeting. A lot of governing bodies present that as an option, as a public comment forum, and I encourage that, but that can be regulated, you know? Okay, so if somebody wants to come up and speak, you know, you can have a sign-in sheet for them, and they're, you know, limited to five slots, and each person gets five minutes. And, you know, they say they speak their piece, and then they sit down, and that's it. Doesn't mean it has to be a back-and-forth with councilmen. It can just be... It can be, certainly, but it does not have to be. So, that public comment forum is a courtesy for the public. Again, I think it's a good idea just to kind of, as, you know, easing off the pressure valve, but especially if it's a controversial subject, so that those people in opposition or in support of one of your initiatives gets to come up and say in front of everyone what their stance on the matter is. But there's no right. I get a lot of complaints that say, "Oh, they're violating my First Amendment rights because I can't speak at a public meeting." Well, First Amendment has nothing to do with it. They can exercise that speech as much as they want, but this is your meeting, and you get to conduct your meeting as you see fit so that you can conduct your business officially within the bounds of the open door law. But that doesn't mean someone gets to stand up and filibuster for an hour and a half about a certain initiative, you know, and rant and rave about how crooked they think everybody is and that kind of thing. And what prompted this model policy that you'll find in your materials is something that happened just like that. Someone got up to speak at a public comment forum, and she took that opportunity to berate the governing body members and attack them personally about... Because she was mad about a certain initiative. So, that's the kind of thing you want to control. You know, if someone gets up to speak and they're being unruly, or they're using profanity, or they're raising their voice, then you can say, "Sir or ma'am, you know, your time is up. Please sit down." You don't have to take that, really. It should be a civil proceeding. And so, you know, I encourage you to use your discretion to do that, however you see fit. By no means do I want to discourage you from having a public comment forum. Just know that you have the discretion to control that, you know, as you see fit.
David?
I have a question. President of our commission and then our council president instituted that public comment was on agenda's own. Now, I understand we consent our limits, but the council president never asked any of the other council people, as far as I know, to establish that. So, people are upset because people are hitting the comment, but it's only on the agenda's own?
Okay. I think there may be a couple of different issues there. First of all, if it's going to be the policy of the council, one could say, because councils and commissioners, bodies, things that are more than one person, only speak through their proceedings. So, in good practice, it ought to be that the council decides, and a majority of the council decides. But then you have to recognize that you have elected a president to be your presiding officer, and maybe you need to think about bylaws or some procedural guidelines that sort of say, "When we're setting an agenda, or when we're going to establish rules of conduct or rules of procedure for how a meeting will operate, maybe we don't want to give unfettered discretion to the presiding officer. Maybe we all want to have an opportunity to say, or maybe we want to have an adopted policy that says, 'We'll open the meeting this way, and we'll have 10 minutes of public comment, then we'll go to public hearing.'" But that you all... That a majority of the council agrees on that. But his argument probably to you contra is, "I'm the president of the council. I can decide." So, then that's... It's not in statute anywhere, but it's kind of like, "How do you all learn to get along?" But certainly, you could limit, just as Luke said, you could say, "We will only take public comment on things that are on the agenda. We don't, you know, we don't necessarily want to hear about the brain dogs over here or the chicken fights that are going on in somebody's front lawn." Anything else? Time, Martin?
It's about 1:48, 1:49.
So, we're into Larry's time.
I will ask, this question came up that drives this issue. The county had a common practice of, if somebody wanted to speak at the council meeting, they would simply call the auditor, and the auditor would put him on the agenda, and then that was the agenda that was posted. And sometimes the county council president wouldn't even have been aware of what the agenda was.
No, no.
This is really what drove the question. The sheriff is supposed to attend the council meetings, I think, anyway, by statute.
Yes, to keep order.
Wanted to attend the meetings and speak, and for three consecutive meetings, he kind of berated the council for not giving him money on a certain issue. So, the council president wanted not, wanted to allow the sheriff to speak in his issue. But the sheriff or the auditor, the auditor put it on the general, and then just kind of drove this question about who gets to set the agenda for this council meeting?
Well, okay, first of all, the auditor's your secretary. She's not a member of the governing body. And I have slides in the materials on setting the agenda. I think it's helpful to coordinate with the auditor because, let's say, she's got 2,700 additional appropriations she needs you to, you know, go through. You kind of need to know that before you then also decide to introduce the most controversial topic in the century at the same meeting because you'll be there from whenever you start to meet until probably breakfast the next day. So, and I think in my slides, I suggest that maybe the presiding officer, so the president of the council, the auditor, get together and take a look and see what matters of business are before the council. Let's say you're in, under the new 321 where the county council is going to, is required to meet to look at all of the circuit barrier aspects. Well, that's going to take some time. So, you may not want to necessarily do that at the same meeting that you want to hear from 37 people about how you don't want, they don't want work relates inmates in the middle of the county right of way. So, but I would also suggest, and seriously, and larger counties have done this, that councils adopt, it could be bylaws... that councils adopt, it could be bylaws or rules of procedure that say, "Here's what the order of the meeting's going to look like." And stick to that as your sort of basic outline of agenda. But, and I think that if people want to come and have public comment, maybe even your rules say, "The council decides who's going..." That nobody can just come and say... In fact, Luke's model rules say, "If you want to address the council, you should have to file a request within seven days before the meeting. You should provide your information, so that maybe, you know, the council can get back and say, 'We don't have time at this meeting. You want to submit something in writing to us,' to try and maybe short-circuit some of that."
I think that's a great idea. Actually, I think by statute, at your January organization meeting, as council, you select the president. I think the statute says you shall adopt procedures for the how the meetings will be conducted for the remainder of the year. So, if you adopt that at the January meeting, you can solve a lot of these issues upfront and not have these things surprise you throughout the year.
And maybe, you know, you're seven members, so maybe you create a three-member rules committee or procedures committee, who they're in charge of the agenda. And they're the ones who set the agenda. You can be creative here in what you do. And there's no, you know, one size fits all, so... The question was, "Do you always have to accept the person on the agenda?" Nobody has a right to speak at a public meeting, so no. You don't have to accept a person on the agenda. Now, if someone's been bothering you to speak on the agenda, they may decide to take another avenue and become, you know, the county's most avid anti-county blogger, or they may find a friendly, you know, reporter on the local newspaper who decides to make it their personal mission to catch you doing something wrong.
If you're going to exclude someone from agenda, have an objective reason for doing so. Either they've disrupted a meeting in the past, or the anticipation is going to be that they're going to disrupt, you know, in the future. You know, don't discriminate, don't, you know... Just because it's an uncomfortable conversation to have, or if you think they're going to say something contrary to your agenda, you know, don't necessarily exclude them because of that, but make it, you know, somewhat objective as to the reason why you've excluded them. One more question in the back, and I'll stick around for a little bit if you guys have questions, and if Karen's available, and we'll address you individually.
The question I have is, on page two, you've got what kinds of notice are required? And you've got at least one day before the meeting. Part of that question is, if somebody wants special notice, I mean, some media or something, can you charge them for special notice?
I would never charge anybody for notice. But that's... What you're talking about is the specific notice to county councils that's... That when it's not one at the regular meetings. And county councils, at most, have two, under the statute, regular meetings a year. One.
Right, you have two, but if you have a regular meeting every month, isn't that...
But you don't have a regular meeting.
That's what I'm getting at. Isn't that a special meeting, every meeting that you have that's not one of the regular meetings?
Yes, yes. And so, you... And the 24-hour notice that's published in the paper is just... You have two papers?
No, are for two meetings, right?
No, your two meetings, your two regular meetings. Your two regular meetings, which some years will only be one regular meeting. Like, this year, you probably only had one regular... You'll only have one regular meeting, because you didn't have to have a meeting in January to organize, because it was an election year for you guys last year. So, your one regular meeting, which only has to comply with the open-door law and then whatever the budget statutes require, is that meeting in August where you... Or September or October, whenever you're adopting the budget. That's your one regular meeting. Everything else, even though you may annually calendar it under the open-door law, is still under your county statute, a special meeting, which then requires you to publish notice 24 hours in advance and give handwritten notice, or not handwritten, but hand-delivered notice to each member of the council 24 hours in advance. You don't have to take that 24-hour notice and hand-deliver it to the newspaper. No, okay? You can try and use the open door.
This is really answering the other question. You said you would charge, but you can't charge.
Well, I don't know of any authority in state law that says you can charge someone to receive notice. No, you're right, there's nothing that says you can't. You're a home-rule entity. I might go work for Luke when you have to... When there's an open door, because there will be. We open... I don't know what the complaint will be if you actually try to charge. Actually, it'll be... It'll be... It'll be seven-inch letters headline in your paper that you've charged the media for their right to access.
Well, that's a big deal, Donald Trump.
One more thing before I leave. I have to submit my annual report to the General Assembly next week, and I need a picture for the presentation section. I don't have one yet, and so I'm going to take one now, if you don't mind. Yeah, act like you're enjoying yourself. Perfect.